Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, and March 23rd, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to view this meeting while in progress may do so by going to zoom.us/join, hit "Join a Meeting" in the top right of your screen, type in the meeting ID, which is 761-904-3998, and hit "Join." Please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note, to join in video meeting with cell phone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store or by watching Public Access TV, Charity Spectrum Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at Select Board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled Select Board meeting, it will be read at that Select Board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised Select Board meeting, it will be read at the next Select Board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectman@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be written within the requirements of the policy on public comments listed in the open time for the public on the Select Board agenda.
Okay, this begins the Select Board meeting, March 31st, 2020. And so, just to start off by saying, I hope everybody in Southampton is staying safe and isolated. We'll go ahead and conduct this meeting, but first, we're just gonna, in unison, recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance...
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, we have a section, obviously, on the agenda for COVID updates, but, so we'll get to that. Obviously, that's of utmost importance. The first is the appointment to the Conservation Commission. And Chris, if you have the information, I'll invite you to actually introduce the applicant.
Sure, thank you. Okay, this is for the appointment of Anna Breen to the Conservation Commission, and this would be to fill the expired term of Matt Fletcher, for a term to begin on April 9th, 2020, and to expire on June 30th, 2022. So, this will be filling out Matt's term, sorry, Matt's term had expired, and so this is filling out, basically, until June of 2022. Anna is a new resident of town. She's been involved with the, she's a health professional right now, but she's been involved with the Vermont Conservation Corps way back as a youth, and has done a lot of trail work in the past, and so we're looking forward to her joining the commission.
Excellent. Everybody got the paperwork and also her resume. Does anybody have any questions for Chris or anybody else?
I don't.
No? No. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion then?
Hey, Rainie?
Yep.
Can I make a suggestion, and you probably have thought of it, but if we make these motions, can we do them all by roll call, so people out there can identify us?
Right, I think we're supposed to do it anyway by roll call. Yeah. So, yeah. Yep. So, would somebody like to make a motion?
I move to approve Anna Breen for the Conservation Commission.
I'll second it.
Okay, then a roll call vote?
Fowles, aye.
Roland, aye.
Tishman, aye.
Martin, aye.
And Groden, aye. Thank you, everyone. Now, Chris, does that leave any openings currently on Conservation Commission?
No, I believe that fills us up with the other two people that we appointed a couple of weeks ago, Dan LaValle and Mike Reed. So, this would be our third vacancy, and this carries us forward, I believe, right now.
Great.
That concurs with the official records.
Okay. And are you having meetings remotely or by Zoom?
They will be having a meeting, ComCom is scheduled to have a meeting April 13th. They went ahead and got their own subscription just because they had to have it ahead of time, just for one month. They got a one-month subscription so they can put out the notice of public hearings that they're required to do well ahead of the meeting. So, they did that, but they're looking forward to having town access to Zoom for their May meeting.
Okay, thank you. Then the next is no hearings, so the reports, I don't know that anybody's had any meetings, but Select Board reports, and if not, Town Administrator report.
And actually, all of mine will come under the COVID-19 update.
Okay, then we'll move right along, then, unless somebody has another suggestion.
Chris, you want to do the...
Yeah, sure. Sorry, Master Plan did meet last night remotely. We were hosted by the PVPC consultant, and so we spent time talking about how we would approach the idea of doing a community survey, especially in these times, and spent time looking at the questions of the last survey that was done more than seven years ago, to figure out which ones might still be valid questions to put in a new survey, and which ones could be tweaked. But we felt that there was still some merit in doing a community survey, so we've got some ideas along that line that we'll be working on, but we'll try to meet maybe once a month, depending on everybody's schedules.
Okay, was there good participation in the meeting remotely?
Yes, we had five out of our seven members there.
Yeah. Well, that's good. My dog just came in the room and opened the door all by herself.
Yeah. Yeah, a cat may stroll by, so just give it everybody a heads up.
I can't believe she can open that door, that's pretty challenging. Anyway, any other reports besides Master Plan?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, then we're on to old business, Shared Building Commissioner update. John?
Do you want to do this open, or do you want to do this in executive?
Well, the contract would be an executive, but do we have any updates on the agreement?
Okay, let me do that, then. So, worked on the agreement last week. What I ended up doing is taking one similar to what we have now with one of the other department heads, putting in all the pertinent information to the Building Commissioner, ran it by Ed, he made some edits, so I took his edits, then I took a draft copy and sent it to our Building Commissioner yesterday morning, and asked him to take a look at it. He said he would, and asked him to get back to me on it, but he hasn't yet, so he's re-looking at it. Him and I had talked originally, and he had some thoughts on what he liked, and I had some thoughts on what we were able to do, so I'm sure he's going over and comparing now, but I don't have anything right now. But I can go into the details of what I put in the executive session.
Okay.
So, basically, I'm waiting for him to get back to me with his comments.
Okay, and that's Tom, you mean, right? Tommy said, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for John about the position itself?
No.
Okay. I think we all agreed, and I think Matt also chimed in, that it was a great job putting it all together, and hopefully, we can retain, you know, good employee that we've had, and formalize what has more or less already been going on. So, if there's nothing else under that topic, then we'll talk about, any updates on the East Street Bridge?
Good luck, Ed.
Ed just went to his office real quick, I think.
Okay, the last update that we had was that the state was actually sending it to a third-party reviewer, the plans, and I didn't hear anything, I don't think anybody else did, that there's been any change, and that was actually pretty recent. So, we'll check with him when he comes back. Should we go on, then, to the remote participation of members at public meetings?
Sure.
Now, Chris, you and Ed had worked on this initially, and I think we actually addressed it last week, and I think it was going to be sort of formalized. Was it KP that took a look at it, or was it reviewed further after last week's meeting?
I don't believe, I don't know that KP took a look at it. I saw the, you know, the draft that Ed sent out, which incorporated the two or three small changes that we made at the last, the last meeting, so that it looks complete, based on what we discussed last meeting.
Okay. I think we added, at John's request, we added a couple of specific language, as opposed to just referring to, you know, the law, so to speak. So, does anybody have any questions about the remote participation document?
No.
How would, how do we go about signing it and approving it as such? Is it, are we delegating to Ed, or?
Well, I think that, I think that we can just go ahead and approve it, and if we have to sign it, then we'll just individually sign it, or e-sign it, either one.
Or we can each, or we can each sign it and get them into Ed, and he'll have five signature sheets instead of one. Does that count?
Yeah. And then, when this is over, we can get the wet signatures on one page of it.
Okay. So, Ed, I don't know if you heard what we said, but we basically were okay with it. It seems like the only changes were the couple that were suggested last time. Is there any other changes that you're aware of?
No, those were the only changes that I made to it, Rainie.
Okay. So, does somebody want to make a motion, then, to approve it?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
It sounded like John and Chris.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so, any other discussion or questions?
No.
All right, then, all those in favor, roll call vote.
Fowles, aye.
Tishman, aye.
Roland, aye.
Martin, aye.
Groden, aye. All right, thanks. Now that we're participating remotely, it's good to have that signed off on. So, Ed, what do you want us to do in terms of signing it? Do you want us to just, can we e-sign it and just email it back to you?
Yeah, what I'll do, I'll do is, I'll send out the document with the page, and you can each, whether you e-sign it or print it and sign it and scan it back to me, and I'll put that together, and when this is all over, and we can have physical contact again, then we'll put the wet signatures on it.
So, Ed, a question for you. Do we have access to DocuSign or something similar, so that we could send it around for all of us in succession?
Not that I'm aware of, John.
Okay, because that would be ideal. We may want to look into that. I don't, I don't, a license, and I'm trying to remember, a license was like $200 last time I looked into it, but I believe it's gone down quite a bit, and you only need one license for sending it out, say, to a town hall to all of us, so if that's something...
DocuSign would be great.
Yeah, I use DocuSign. If that's something you want me to look at, Ed, let me know, if you don't have time, but I'll be, I'll be glad to look into it.
Okay, thanks.
John, that's a one-time payment, or is that annual?
Annual payment. But, you know, for that kind of price, especially nowadays.
And just, just to be clear for anybody who's watching who didn't follow this last week, that this remote participation guideline is basically for when we do get back to normal, and we do have quorums in place, et cetera. So, we're still working out, right, what we're gonna do going forward now with the Zoom meeting. This is our first Zoom meeting.
Right. Correct.
Okay, so, we're clear, we're just gonna send it back to Ed, either sign, print, sign, scan, send back, or e-sign and send back, and that's, either one is just as good, Ed?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. You all set, Ed?
Yes, I am.
Well, while you're out of the room, on the agenda did have an update on East Street Bridge. Was there anything new?
No, actually, VHB reached out to me on Friday and let me know that they had still not, had heard anything back from Mass DOT and the peer review, and that the 30-day window on that was just about up. So, whether non-essential, disclosure of non-essential business has anything to do with that or not, but VHB is trying to find out what they can and get back to us on it.
Okay, so, we're just waiting for that, we're waiting for that before they can move forward at all, right?
Correct, because they would want to take and incorporate any of, any suggestions or requirements from Mass DOT into that 95% design plan, and then they would send it out for, once they have that, they'd send it out for the permitting, whether that's for our own Conservation Committee permitting, or state permitting that's required.
Well, it sounds like it's gonna be held up one way or another, right?
Well, I mean, once, it depends on how this all plays out. I mean, construction itself seems, at this point in time, to still be allowed to go on, but we would need all those comments back, then we'd go out to bid, so I'm guessing that even with all that, that the actual physical construction wouldn't start until probably July or August, so hopefully, we'll be out of all those current sanctions.
Okay.
Hey, Maureen?
Yep.
I just want to ask a question. I'm trying to toggle back and forth between the agenda and seeing you folks. Can you see me right now?
No.
No.
No. But I can't see anybody.
You can't.
Okay, so, I have to be on that screen to see you.
Yes.
You're back.
Now you're back, John.
I may have to toggle back. Well, let me ask you a question, Ed. Can you send me the agenda to my personal email?
Yeah, hold on, I'll have to leave the room again.
I'm sorry.
You know, I have my phone here, I can send it to you.
I can forward it to him, too.
I can forward it.
Do you know my personal email without me saying it over the camera?
I do.
Okay, thank you. I set up a laptop next to me so I can get onto it, but I... But you're right, Matt, if we continue to do this, I'll have to set up dual screens.
Dual screens.
Yeah. And while, while we're on the phone, thanks for donating the microphone and speaker.
Yeah, thank you very much, Matt.
You're very nice, Matt. Thank you very much for doing that.
No problem, guys.
Yeah, I can't really see anybody, but I'm not gonna log back out and back in again, so I'm just kind of looking at the agenda on my phone, and...
Is your camera on here?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, this happened before. I had to log back out and then come back on and see everybody, but that's okay. I can hear you, and that's the main thing.
Yeah, we can see you, so...
We can see you.
Yeah, so, anyway, here's the scoop. We're up to, actually, new business, which is COVID-19 update, COVID-19 employee plans update. So, Ed, I'll turn that over to you, then.
All right. Thank you, Maureen. All right, COVID-19 update, and as you're aware, currently, there are four confirmed cases of COVID-19 here in Southampton. And we received word that PVPC will be proceeding with the next round, or the second round of funding. Our Health Director, Jerry Swanson, has sent in our needs, and we are expecting that we will probably receive about the same amount, because it's the same 200, well, it's a new $250,000, but the amount's the same that PVPC will be distributing here in their Western Mass communities, so we're expecting about the same amount that we received in the first round, which is about $4,000. And then, there are anticipated further rounds and other forms of funding that are supposed to come through.
What about, what about the availability of tests for first responders? Is that on anybody's list?
As of today, all I have heard about for tests for first responders is that they would still need to show some type of symptoms to get those tests, that it wouldn't be automatically done like at the start of a shift, or what have you.
Okay.
But over, at least for this week, it looks like there are additional testing sites and additional tests being done out there, so the volume is starting to ramp up, probably not as much as we will probably see in another week, but it is starting to increase.
Well, the $4,000 that came in through PVPC to the town, primarily through, you know, imagine to the Boards of Health, you're saying that we're gonna expect to get another $4,000 likely. Has this been earmarked towards particular activities or supplies?
The...
I know you read the thing last week, but I'm just wondering, now that we already know that we got the money, or plan to, does Jerry, or Charlie, or anybody, have they put together a budget for how it's gonna be used?
Yes, and that was sent out today to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. It's in conjunction with South Hadley and a couple of other communities, and at this point in time, they were still looking at how to, or to keep funding the support for the Maven Reporting System, which is what we used it for in the first round.
Don't we already have, don't we already fund that?
Well, they, because of the fact that there was so much activity in it, that volume has increased, and now we've actually expanded upon with the coordination with those other communities, to make sure that it's being watched 24/7, and that it's all being reported back.
Okay.
Yeah. It's also important to get that information out to our first responders.
And is any of the $8,000 going to be used for PPE at all, or?
For what?
For personal protective equipment, or?
Not to my knowledge, at this point in time. We have requested further PPE. As you are aware, that is what, especially the N95 masks, or masks in general, are one of the items that seem to be in very, very short supply. At this point in time, there, the, shall we say, the effort seems to be getting that into the healthcare network and into the hospitals, and that we are secondary, as far as that goes, and Mewa has continued to suggest that we keep ordering that as much as possible from our own vendors, just in case it does come into stock, and so we do get some supplies from the federal national stockpile.
Okay, can, can you clarify this process for me, please? Because my understanding is that this money is coming out of the, a public health fund from the state, and that the state had made the decision to funnel the money out through our regional planning organizations. I had a few emails back and forth with Lindsay Sabadosa to help understand what role Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has in the dispersment of funds, and so she sent an email and clarified for me that their obligation for PVPC is to do epidemiological, sort of like, analyses of the various towns, and I think in their jurisdiction, I think there's quite a few of them, right, 20 to 30? And so, they're...
31.
Pardon me?
I think it's 31, to be exact.
Right, so, they basically are the, I think their cut, so to speak, is 8%, and they go ahead and, because there's 351 communities, that unless you're part of a regional health district, you go through Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and part of their job is to also assess the needs of the individual communities.
Correct.
Through an epidemiological report of some kind. So, when whoever, whether it's Jerry, Charlie, or whatever, when they are looking at how they're going to pair up with other communities and/or their choice to spend the money, is this money that's being directed directly to the Board of Health, and they're overseen by the Board of Health, or is this money into the town that gets funneled over to... In other words, do we have access to the, you know, how the money's being spent, so that we can oversee it as the Select Board?
Well, the money comes to the town. So, Vicki has set up an account for that, and in general, theoretically speaking, it can be used by, if we got enough money, it can be used by not just Health Department, but other departments as well.
So, the police or fire could also appeal for some funding, and right now, that decision's being made by a committee of people?
Yes. I mean, from the get-go, it was, started out that police, fire, EMS, myself, the Board of Health, and the Health Director were involved in putting together a basic, a budget and a needs assessment. That original budget was, if my memory is correctly, about $30,000 or $31,000, and they just did a second round of needs assessment. Pioneer Valley Planning actually had a conference call yesterday out to the various communities that would be getting this fund, just to get, get some ideas of what the communities might be looking for into the future, and, and that's what some of the communities talked about, not specifically knowing what the exact needs might be in a week or so, and that could Pioneer Valley Planning Commission take a look at possibly distributing those funds, maybe on a, a per-population basis, and splitting it up that way, or some, some other equitable way.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or any comments about the, the update from Ed about funding, or anything else?
No.
One, one small question. I think last week somewhere, the Fire Chief put out an email, I think it was, about what was happening on their end, and also looking possibly for volunteers to make masks and things like that while waiting to see if he was gonna get a shipment in. Now, I was just curious whether we knew anything about the status of whatever his order was, if that's, I assume, separate from this, this grant thing, but something that he does through his normal channels. Do we know whether he's gotten the supplies that he's asked for?
As far as I know, he hasn't gotten the supplies to the extent that he has asked for.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just on TV, a few minutes before we started, where they were saying that, once we have enough masks for the healthcare workers, they're gonna probably recommend that everybody wear them, which is gonna be interesting.
Yeah, it sure will. So, Ed, right now, is there any regular meeting, weekly? I know that they were having the weekly conference calls, but is there any meeting that the Select Board should be a part of that is, involves police, fire, Board of Health, and emergency planning?
Not that is currently scheduled. Most of us have been communicating, shall we say, remotely via emails, texts, but if anything comes up, I will definitely let the five of you know.
Okay. Is anybody else feeling like, you know, there should be something on a weekly basis with the police, fire, Board of Health, or emergency planner and a Select Board member?
It would be a good idea, especially since everything has been extended, so a short, a short call-in would be nice.
Yeah, I would agree.
Me, too.
Okay, I'll send an email over to, or Ed, if you want to just send it, email it to Charlie. I think, I just think that, like, the question that you just asked about the equipment for the Fire Department, I mean, we should, we should know where they stand. I think, you know, we have four cases in town right now, I just feel like we should really, weekly updates, I mean, believe me, I'm getting bombarded with information from all over the place. It just feels like, I'd like to, like, hear from the police and fire, or at least have representative, be part of a weekly Southampton update.
Sure, I will reach out and set that up.
Okay, that'd be great.
If I could ask one more thing, and if it's not appropriate to ask, you can not answer, but I'm just curious, with the cases that we have in town, who ends up being responsible to do any of the contact tracing? Is that our Board of Health? Is there a public health nurse that comes to town? How does that happen?
I didn't hear the question, or the first part of the question.
With, with the actual cases... With the actual cases that we have in town now, I assume we might be trying to do some contact tracing, and I was asking who's responsible for doing that?
I think what I.
Go ahead, Rainey.
Go ahead.
Well, you know, how we find out usually about the cases, like I said last time, comes in through the provider offices into that platform, Maven. And so, once they identify a case, they did allow now first responders to know where the address is, you know, for the protection of first responders. But the case finding that happens is done by the Board of Health. So as a first step, the Board of Health had voted to sort of, you know, deputize all the Board of Health as health agents. So they had a meeting last week, and that's, I think it was last week, yeah. And so that's what they did. They made all three members of the Board of Health, health agents, for the purpose of being able to carry out the duties of a health agent, which would involve, at least at this point, I think ultimately the goal would be to have a public health nurse who would go ahead and do that case finding, who have you been in contact with? There's a whole map and tree for that sort of activity. And then there's reporting that goes along with that. So I'm sure that's one of the things that requires funding. And if that's what they're referring to as the extension of the Maven would be to allow more licenses on the Maven, or more time, or whatever, that would be completely appropriate. But it's going to, you know, that's going to take a lot, that takes a lot of time even, because everything from strep to you name it is reported. So even without this pandemic, it's a pretty big responsibility. And it takes, you know, time. When I was in the Board of Health, we did have a communicable disease. We had a tuberculosis situation. And so we ended up contracting with a public health nurse. And she, we basically turned everything over to the public health nurse who actually did all the work and then gave us a report.
That was going to be part of my question, is whether we should be thinking ahead. I know we don't have maybe the funds or maybe the need for it right now. But just thinking ahead, we don't know how the situation is going to evolve. But, you know, could we be thinking about identifying some potential public health nurses?
Yeah, I think Chris is right, because by the time, you know, there's a real need, there may not be anyone that we can access. It's probably worth an inquiry.
I think that's part of what they're looking at. There's a medical reserve corps, and these are folks that are, you know, when I was in the Board of Health, we had the H1N1 thing, and we went through the entire street listing and took everybody that was an EMT, a nurse. And we actually had a number of people, we contacted them and asked them to be part of a drill at the seasonal flu clinic to pretend it was an H1N1 emergency dispensing. So I think, I'm hoping, that's one of the reasons why I want to make sure that we have like a regular, at least weekly, meeting that involves the Board of Health and, you know, Charlie, the Chief of Police and Fire. Because I think that, you know, right now, you know, there's releasing funds statewide and federal-wise to hopefully address this pandemic before it becomes operational budget monies. And I'm hoping that that's part of what the work of the Board is doing, but I'm a little, I'm not really sure right now. So I'd like that assurance that they are looking ahead. But just so you know, in the 2021 budget, they did put monies in for a public health nurse. I mean, request, request in, I should say.
Right, that's helpful information, Rainey. And I guess my point is, I just, I would like to have that regular meeting, if it's weekly or whatever, just because I don't want to assume. I don't want to make, you know, I've been in too many situations where people have assumed and have been wrong, and I don't want to fall into that too.
Yeah, so Ed, if you could just reach out and, you know, set up something where we could have our, you know, select board representative and just make sure that we're all kind of up on what's happening with the fire, what's happening with the EMTs, what's happening with the police. I just think that we should have at least weekly, with the incredible pace of that information coming out from all over the place, we shouldn't be having any questions about, you know, how the EMTs are doing and do they have enough equipment? Because when I was getting a communication back and forth with Lindsay about the $4,000 funds, which is frankly, not very much, she had said that her understanding was that the fire department was a little bit better positioned than they had been. But I didn't get anything saying that what made them in a better position. So I think that we should have regular communication.
And the other thing, it'd be interesting to hear the status of the town, not just number of cases, but how observant we are, where might we put out more information so that people take better care of themselves and so on, when we become aware of situations?
Yeah, and since this is changing daily, that's a good idea. We'll set that up, and I will let you know that probably the most important piece right now that's going out there is it's very important for people to stay at home and not to go out unnecessarily, and only go out when they absolutely need to. Best social practices.
Yep, absolutely. It's hard, I mean, it's, everything stops, but you just have to. Ed, would you like to update us on the employee plans update?
Sure, and that's part of this too. And the next thing, just to let you know that this afternoon Governor Baker did have a press conference at 2:00. And he has extended the stay-at-home and non-essential work order through May 4, which includes new restrictions on Airbnb and hotels. So this basically aligns that with the public school closures and the daycare or the childcare closures that he announced earlier. So basically, when we had approved the first round of the current work at home and the current pay practice for those that are working at home and non-essential employees, we did it for the first two weeks of the governor's order. So would the Board like to extend the current practice for the government buildings and for the employee pay through the May 4 extension?
How is it working out, Ed?
Seems to be working out very good, to be honest. But we've got some people working alternate shifts. We've got people working from home. Some people working in, working here in Town Hall or splitting between Town Hall and home. Did have an IT provider in today. And we're, I'm having a couple of remote clients so that some people can access their additional files from home, rather than having to come in, which will cut down some more on, shall we say, the, any interaction here in Town Hall. At any particular time, probably over the last four or five days when I've been in, there might be anywhere from another three to maybe four or five people or employees here in Town Hall. So in my opinion, that's working out very well. Work's still getting done, might be getting done at a little slower pace, but still moving forward.
Are we getting any major concerns or complaints from the residents?
Not that I have, not that I have heard at this point.
That probably answers the question best.
Yeah, and like I say, we have been using, you know, alternate methods, whether they can pay online, whether they can just mail it in, mail a payment in, or mail, you know, something for a permit in that we can send back to them via mail. Or they more, I see a lot of people using the Dropbox outside, not only for payments, but for getting other information here.
How do other people feel about the extension? That would be basically another five weeks. Have you been getting, you know, pretty regular updates from department heads, Ed, in terms of people working from home, productivity? And just like, sort of, is their morale okay, all of that?
Morale seems to be good at this particular time. You know, the employees are definitely, shall we say, concerned for their home, their own and fellow employees' health. So, you know, they recognize whatever that can get done without a close contact with one another, or can't cap, you know, working at home. That's a plus at this particular time.
Just a thought, but have you given a thought to maybe having Zoom department head meetings on a regular basis to stay in contact?
Well, now that we've got it up and running, and this is, of course, I don't know how many of them may have the ability to use Zoom, but that is one possibility. One of the things in the governor's press release or press conference today or briefing today is it looks like we can also get a 90-day free trial to go to meeting, which they've reached out to offer to the state and municipalities in the state. So looks like we'll have a couple of options to utilize.
That'd be a great way to stay connected. And from my point of view, if we extend it, it seems like you need some sort of connection with these folks to keep the continuity.
So have people submitted a schedule to you in advance? So you know when they'll be in the office, when they'll be home? So that, you know, you're just aware?
Yes, I mean, and when we did this, they sent in a general plan as far as that goes. But you've all been updating me. I'm going to be, you know, coming into a Town Hall on any particular day or coming in for a while.
Okay.
Are we incurring any expenses? I mean, in terms of staying within budget? I mean, there's been an awful lot of furloughs and, you know, people closing down. And are we in any, I mean, are we incurring additional expenses that we should be concerned about? That would, or is there enough work that we would have to look at positions at all?
Not for this particular year, for fiscal year 20. The funding was in the budgets. There may be some overtime in, you know, some departments. But I think some of that, hopefully, we'll actually be able to generate reimbursement, reimbursements from, from whether it's the state or the federal government. But as of yet, I mean, there's been some incidental items that we may not have normally purchased, whether those are disinfectant wipes, alcohol, things like that. But I wouldn't say anything that would be eye-raising at this particular time. Now, what the impact will be in another week or two, should the curve of the outbreak still keep climbing? Instead of the social distancing working and keeping that down? You know, that possibly, you know, could change if we had to purchase, whether it's N95 masks or some other items, and actually be able to get them and not get them through FEMA or Mima. You know, that may be something. One of the pieces of, that was released today by the governor, is that the Department of Revenue has said that, much like in a natural disaster, whether it be a tornado, you know, windstorm, ice storm, or what have you, if there are deficits left from fiscal year 20 from directly related to the cost of the COVID-19 outbreak, because we'd only be eligible for 75% from the federal government, that Dallas can be spread over three fiscal years to pay those off.
Does anybody have any other questions about the governor's decision today? And also about our town and the prospect of continuing the current status till May 4?
I mean, to me, if business is getting done and Ed staying in contact with the department heads, I think that's a, I don't have an issue from that point.
Nor do I.
How about you, Matt?
I don't have an issue with it, no. I'm glad to see that the work's still getting done. And hopefully, the, hopefully, the public and the citizens feel that we're doing the best we can. Because we are.
And that everyone is safe.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're doing our best to get the.
Yes.
Get the work done and continuation of government and still practice social distancing.
Right.
Great.
I do think it's a good idea, though, what John said, is to try to have department head meetings by Zoom. And I think that, since we're talking about department heads, I would hope and expect that everyone that's a department head would be able to manage a Zoom link and be part of a meeting. So that would be, that would be a great thing, if that could happen regularly. Again, the communication piece is the part that actually needs to really be stepped up on. I mean, everybody has to like, be able to check in and know what's going on. That's when things fall apart.
Yep. And as far as Zoom goes, as long as Ed's inviting them, all they need to do is download it on their laptop or computer. It's free.
Yep, and it's not that hard to do, even be walked through if they're not all that computer savvy.
Right.
Do we have to vote on that, Ed? I imagine we do.
Yeah, please.
So I'll make a motion that we allow them to extend the process as we're doing now for working from home and from the office as needed.
And follow the current pay practices?
Through May 4.
That too, yes.
Through May 4.
Yes.
Yeah, and that can be changed sooner or later, depending on the situation, yeah.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, John made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
That sounds like Francine and Matt, who would like to claim it?
Give it to Matt.
Okay, Matt, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Roll and I.
Dishman, I.
All's I.
Martin, I.
Rod and I, thank you. Any other necessary business that can't wait until the April 14 regular select board meeting?
I still got some more updates.
Yeah. Okay, sure, go ahead.
Okay, just to go back to some of the other current announcements, Family First Act, which came out of the federal government probably about a week or so ago. It adds 80 hours of additional paid sick time to full-time employees and fewer hours to part-time employees based on their average hours worked if the employee is unable to work in person or remotely because of the following six reasons. Employee subject to employee-related quarantine or isolation order at federal, state, or local level. A healthcare provider has advised the employee to self-quarantine due to COVID-19 concerns. Employee is experiencing COVID-19 symptoms and seeking a diagnosis. Employee is caring for an individual subject to the order or advice described above. Employee is caring for a child due to COVID-19-related school closure or professional childcare provider unavailability. Or the employee is experiencing other substantially similar conditions specified by the Secretary of Health and Human Services. So, and this, the Family First Act is in effect. And because of the COVID-19 outbreak, and it will stay in effect through the end of December of 2020, at which time, unless it's renewed, it will become inactive and no longer law.
Well, that's very substantial.
Yes, it's an additional, it's an additional two weeks.
Any other updates, Ed?
Yeah, had a question, because like I say, it looks like this is going to go through at least May 4. And then we don't know as far as trying to get caught up or anything. So I've been asked what the Board would like to do in regards to employees who have accrued vacation time that they may not be able to use before June 30. Would the Board allow them to carry that over into fiscal year 21?
And we currently have a policy of carryover?
No carryover.
No carryover.
There's no carryover.
They ask permission individually, and we look at each case individually. Some may be allowed to carry over a week or so, depending upon the circumstances.
Right, it's got to be a severe circumstance, I guess.
I don't think we've really ever allowed that, for the most part.
No, just once in a while, the building commissioner or the accountant, but it's different times, obviously.
And some people have it in their contract that they can. I know that Vicki, Ed, do I think?
Vicki gets a group of time. She doesn't have necessarily vacation and all that. She has, whether, I forget what they call it.
Is it flex time?
Flex time, yeah. But I personally think we should look at it on an individual basis. I mean, if some people want to take it off now, that's fine. If they can't, then I think we should look at it. It's a different time right now, so we've got to be flexible, I think.
Yeah. Do we have to make a decision? We don't have to make a decision right now, right? This is just to kind of think about?
I mean, the sooner the better, just so people know. But I would say, as long as we know by the next select board meeting, which is scheduled for April 14, I think that would be good, so people can plan. You know, I know, I did watch the governor's presser this afternoon, and one of his things is he was talking about the changes in the Airbnb short-term rentals and the hotels, is that, you know, he did emphatically say that this is not time for vacations, so.
I know in some states, like South Carolina, they have closed down all the hotels, resorts, beaches, and you can't go into the state unless you're a permanent resident there. So, yeah, taking a vacation now would be tough.
Seems like we ought to put some time limit on it. Like, in other places I've worked, we've done like a, you know, maximum one-week carryover, you know, 40-hours carryover.
Well, it might be hard to do if somebody's got two weeks left that they saved up to go on vacation at this point in time. I mean, I might think that we might be generous enough, or we might be generous enough to let them carry it over, but maybe we put the provision in there on the theory that they do use it in the next fiscal year.
I mean, I think their whole purpose of not doing carryovers is so that you have a stable budget, so you're not having, like, all of a sudden, you know, four weeks or three weeks, you know, of coverage. So, anyway, I would like to add it to the 14th of April agenda personally.
Yeah.
Is there any way that we could get an idea of the amount of vacation time that's outstanding? I mean, that would put it in perspective for us.
I can see what I can find out.
And it wouldn't have to be one or the other. It could be carryover and/or payout or a little bit of both, depending upon the circumstances.
The payout will affect the budget, I mean.
Right.
Have to take the time. I would almost put a restriction where they can't take more than a week or two at a time, so that we don't have a long stretch where we need to cover.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, these are very unusual circumstances. I wouldn't want to disadvantage everybody. I mean, I had a vacation. I'm supposed to be in California right now, frankly, and I'm now scheduled to go in October. So I think if I didn't have that certainty, you know, I think that would be really hard to do. So I think that it's, I'm, you know, certainly understand their circumstance, but I also, you know, have an obligation to understand how that would impact the budget. So if you can get us some information about that, Ed, I think that would be great.
Yeah, okay, will do.
Okay, so what else, Ed?
Okay, lastly, just to let you know that the CARES Act, which is the latest one, it comes down from the government, that's the one that is authorizing small business loans and also has a provision for unemployment insurance adjustments to the state for individuals that might not normally be covered from unemployment in the particular states. And I know on the small business loans and the things, from what I've looked at, it's a very long document, but looks like it will address some of the needs of small businesses that are being hurt at this particular time. I know on the unemployment end of things is individual states, including Massachusetts, are currently looking for some guidance back to the federal government for what the instances of adjustments for people that are not normally covered might be, so that they have clarification on that before they start accepting those unemployment claims. And that's all I've got.
Any questions about the CARES Act? I've been sort of following that, you know, work-wise anyway. So, but if it's new to anybody, did anybody want to ask any questions about it? Okay. Is there any other agenda items that can't wait until April 14?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand. I know, Ed, you said you've got this license for us. Now, do you have just some thoughts about how you would like to proceed with other committees that do want to meet?
No, not at this particular time. The other thing I'm going to do is look at that possibility for go-to-meeting to move forward, because rather than maybe buying another license for Zoom for some separate committees, we may be able to access that for free.
Are there any committees, Ed, that want to still meet in person?
No, oh, no, no.
I don't think so.
I would hope not.
No, I don't think so. No, it's just some that need to do normally, like their public hearings, uncommon public planning board and so forth, that I think would. And, you know, I was hoping that we could just, you know, whatever your license, your password is, that we could just, you know, either have you schedule those meetings or pass the password to the head of the meeting to schedule their own meeting, but if you're not comfortable doing that.
Yeah, we can do that. Like I say, the first fallback will be, or the first recommendation will be Zoom, and maybe we set, like, the planning board or CBA or Contivation, which may have some timelines to use the Zoom and look at the possibilities to go to meeting for some of the others. Right now, that, as far as I know, the legislation, which looks like it will eventually pass, that would actually delay statutory timelines on permit issued by, like, the planning board, Contivation or CBA. To my knowledge, it still has not passed, but it looks like it will eventually pass. And that, if it goes through as it was originally proposed, would actually extend all those timelines to 45 days after the COVID-19 outbreak is over, so that they don't become automatic approvals if the particular boards or committees don't act in that timeframe.
Okay, well, that's good to hear.
Any other business that can't wait until the next select board meeting? Does anyone have any suggestions for agenda items that they would like to make in terms of next select board meeting? There's a lot of things on hold, unfortunately, but does anybody have any requests?
No. I guess my concern right now is we're in the middle of the budget season involving, you know, finance committee and others, and boards and committees that are, you know, involved in the budget-making process. How are we going to get back? We really do need, as Chris suggested, we really need to have a forum for people to meet to.
Meet, yeah, meet virtually. You're correct.
Yeah. Because we're not getting any extension on our fiscal year, I'm sure.
Actually, it looks like we will. Whether we want to go that way or not, it does look like that's going to be a strong possibility.
Okay.
But I don't want to fall back to that if we don't have to either.
No, we still need to have a plan regardless of when that fiscal year, next fiscal year starts.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Ed, have there been any town residents that have contacted Town Hall with any assistance needs, either through the senior center or through your office?
None that I am aware of.
Okay. I just want to bring everybody's attention to the email from Cindy Palmer. She is in the Almaters Committee. And just to remind people, I'm not going to read the whole email, but it basically says to town officials and community leaders that there is a fund that's been in place for 120 years, and it's basically to help people that are going through very difficult times. And so there is information available and there are funds available for a one-time sort of need. And it's all 100% confidential. It doesn't go through the select board. It simply goes through this Almaters Committee. So if anybody is interested or has anybody that may be interested in this, they can contact the Almaters at almaters@mytowngovernment.org. So, anyway, it says maximum expenditure generally does not exceed $1,000. So, anyway, if you know anybody that has a unique need, we want to make sure that we can help them out any way we can. So I think then we're up to warrants.
Okay. One other thing, maybe, thinking about the next meeting, is there a chance to get the update if there's any status report on the needs of seniors, especially people who are living alone? Not specific information about individuals, but to try to understand, because there are many, several people have gotten in touch with me and asked about ways in which they could help. And I understand that that can't be an official town thing, but as a group of volunteers, people can work together if they choose.
Yeah, when I saw the newsletter for the senior center, I was a little disappointed. I thought that that, like, you know, clearly could be something people could do remotely. There was the decision not to have a newsletter for the month of April, I believe. It seems like if a lot of those newsletters go out electronically, or even if it's not, that might have been a source of, you know, please call this number if you have any, because they have a database of all the seniors in town.
Right. And I know that they've been outreach to people, but, and that's why I think to let people know perhaps maybe what's being done and also let people know ways in which they might help if they want to help, and what's actually going on. But we can see where that stands.
I'd be happy to reach out to just Janet and Joan and find out if we can get some kind of, you know, report on, are people calling in? Have they been reaching out? What are the needs that they're hearing about?
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so warrants.
All right, we're looking at warrant P-20-38 for $290,768.20. A payroll deduction warrant PD-20-38 for $47,788.32. PD-20-38A for $168,014.34. And W-20-39 for $816,476.58.
Any questions about the warrants? No? Okay, I'm just actually bringing back up my agenda. Somebody who has it in front of you, can you just tell me what's next after all the warrants?
Other documents.
The signature, right?
And it was minutes to approve, but we don't have any, and then pending items?
Any updates or questions on the pending items?
Yeah, Ed, you brought up last time, because we were trying to get that dog complaint and stuff like that off the agenda for you to handle, but you said there was a new update on that. Where is that now? Do we need to react to it?
Yeah, just trying to figure out how we can actually have the public hearing for that under the current circumstances and need to meet virtually rather than in person. I'll follow up with that.
Is it a serious issue or is it just an annoyance for one of the neighbors?
Well, an annoyance for one of the neighbors, I would say, is a, you know, serious issue.
You know what I mean. It's not an animal out there biting everybody all the time.
No, but this has been going on for a while, so.
Yeah, it's a new dog, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
But it's the same person who's registering the complaint, only the person that's there having issue is the same neighbor, but a different dog?
That is correct, yes. Same neighbor, different dog.
Same owner, same neighbor.
And the police have been out there a couple of times.
Do you know if they don't have the original dog? Or is that not the issue right now? Did they get rid of the original dog that had the problems? They got another dog, and this isn't a problem also? Or do they have two dogs?
No, this is a new dog. The original one's gone.
All right. Doesn't sound like a good choice in dogs.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like the problem's a dog. So what's happening with dog licenses? I assume nothing is. So it would be helpful for us to know whether the current dog that's causing the problem is licensed in Southampton. Do you know if that's true?
I don't. I can check.
Today was the last day you could apply for it. You should be completing your license application.
Yep, 3/31. So, Ed, if you can actually check, because all that's done by the mail now, or most of it is.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on the pending list? It's pretty, you know, light right now, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't imagine there's anybody on the call, but if there are, I see Tammy there. Any open time for the public? Would anybody from the public like to ask a question or participate?
We're still doing it, but via email, Rini.
What's that? We're still doing it only by email? Okay. And I did not get any emails. Did you, Ed, from anybody from last meeting? Okay.
Maureen, can you hear me?
I can.
It's Lucy.
Hi, how are you?
Good, that's my ceiling up there, sorry.
That's your what there?
I'm here, yeah.
Okay.
What?
Bring your camera down, so people, it could be recorded, because you need to identify yourself and all that.
Okay, well, here's my hand. I don't want to put my face on camera, because I'm not in the best-looking place right now. But anyways, the dog licensing, I am not, you know, going to crucify people if they didn't get them in by today, you know, as long as by June 1. After June 1 is when we start charging the late fee. So we'd like them to be in by today, but, you know, given the events that are happening around us, I mean, I'm going to give people a leeway. I would hope that they wouldn't take advantage of that. They are coming in by mail, and I am being very careful with processing them. I am processing them right now. I'm up to 400. And as far as the dog that was involved in the hearing from two years ago, I don't think it's the same dog. Like you said, I think it's a new dog. And I think there's an even more problem with that.
Actually, if you could just, you and Ed could have a conversation, if you can check to see if the dog that's the problem right now is currently registered. And then what we'll do, we'll add that to the agenda, maybe to the next select board meeting. But it would be helpful for us to know. And I thank you. I appreciate the delay for folks on the licensing. That makes total sense. Thanks for letting us know about that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want people to freak out, like, you know, they're going to get fined, so.
Yeah, all right, thanks a lot, Lucy. Is there any, so I don't think there was any other emails or public comment from the last meeting. So at that particular point, we'll go into executive session.
Hey, Maureen, before you do that, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
If people are able to come into the Zoom meeting and during public sessions speak to us, wouldn't that be okay to be allowed? That'd be the same as being at a regular meeting.
I personally don't have a problem with it, so long as they can identify themselves in some way that it's clear that they're who they say they are.
Yeah, if they're on camera, they identify themselves, "Yeah, Lucy, we know, hi."
Yeah, Lucy, we know, but for other people, sure. Ed, is there any kind of directive about this in terms of the public? I know that there was a lot of attention paid to how the public can be part of meetings, but.
No, this was originally how it was set up, because we didn't know how it would work out. And I am going to get some feedback from the East Hampton City Council, because they're about to try their first meeting with taking live comment versus the mail or the email. So I'll let you know how that comes out.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, I was on the call with. I was on the call with, with Jen and with Peg Coniff from East Hampton City Council today as we walk through this process, and I need to thank them for their help, because they, I think they were, they gave us a lot of good information, a lot of good tips.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's great, absolutely.
I've got to say, this one worked out a lot better than last week, so thanks for setting up.
I will say that, yes. Appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely, appreciate that. Okay, are we all ready to go into executive session?
Yeah, you want to read the reason?
Yep, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Number 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, shared building commissioner contract. So if we could have a motion to go into executive session, and we will not be returning to open session.
Don't move.
Second.
So we all have to leave right now, whoever's watching, correct?
Once we vote.
We have a separate link, anyway.
Yeah, we're all leaving.
Yeah, we have a separate link.
Okay.
So I heard, I believe, was it Francine and then John or Matt?
Yes.
I didn't hear that. Was it Francine and then Matt?
Francine and John.
Okay, John, okay, good. All right, so the roll call vote.
Dishman, I.
Bowls, I.
Roland, I.
Martin, I.
Groden, I. All right, thanks. So we'll see in a couple of minutes with the, the other executive session Zoom link. Okay, goodbye, everybody, be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.